Yeah, they're right.
Okay, we're on, we're on the air.
There is agenda up there.
Who else is here?
All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the interim board of selection to order on April 12th, 2022. Please stand for the buzzer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, all five members are present, so we have our quorum this evening. Any amendments to the agenda? Okay. We have reports from the fire chief and road commissioner. Did you see before being that we did not have reports?
No, just tonight for me that.
No report.
We asked the, specifically the Public Works Department to report on informational costs on energy, the new pricing that we're getting for diesel fuel, kerosene, gasoline.
Kerosene? What do we use?
It is kerosene.
Lamps in case of a power outage or something. All right, thank you. All right, number four on the agenda is update to the board regarding the town manager search process.
I try to be brief. In front of each of you is a package that I prepared today in April 8th. It's the interim manager to you on the manager's search. I'm trying to get approvals tonight to move forward on the advertisements. The cover page is really some of the outline, but the details come back to one, page two, where I've asked for you to review this town manager opportunity, which is the title, and the actual posting that I'd like to put into the newspaper ad itself. I tried to be a little creative, try to get attention to those who are in the business, but you might want to take a moment to review that because I am going to ask you to give me authority to move forward on the ads being placed accordingly.
I didn't, I read through these and I, my question was the page, town manager opportunity, and then the other one that's the town manager search and selection, which is more detailed. Where are those going? Like, is, is the short one the actual advertisement? But they have to go to the website to see the more detailed one, or what, what's going where?
The title Town Manager Opportunity is the title that I'd like to have for the ad so that if it's in the print, print form, it'll show up as Town Manager Opportunity and it goes exactly as you see it here. The website would have the same thing, but on the front page, Town Manager Information or Application. Go to that page and then all of this would show up again.
Okay, so this is the, somebody would see this ad somewhere, and then they were driving them to the website to get the more detail.
If they are too lazy to get to the website, we didn't.
You probably don't want them to. Okay.
And that's, that's the advertisement, so let's keep this in the forefront because I want to make sure you're comfortable with it while we make amendments. Then they go to the page on our website, which will show up as Durham Main Town Manager Search and Selection. It gives a brief informational point, and then it indicates what we expect for submittals from any applicant. And there's a disclosure at the very bottom that you yourselves are indicating to any applicant so they know the process.
And the list of submittals, so are we providing PDFs of, for instance, like the application for employment and consent to the background check?
If you go to the third page.
Okay.
That, the third page should be town of Durham consent to background check. We will provide that. We also have, as I understand, an application for employment as well.
Yep.
So that they will, it's a one-stop shop. Once they get to that website location. Okay, so we don't have one page. Don't have the application. No, that's not it. I would just simply, at this point, scan it and put it right up into it.
What, is the summary statement, is that, is that like a resume? Is that what that?
Yes. What I'm looking for is a five hundred, less than five hundred words, why they think it will fit well, but do well here.
Oh, okay, there's the summary statement, okay. Couple of other summary statements, sorry, it's for future. Okay.
That may tell us a whole lot right off. The next page in this package are a listing of what I have found to be fairly successful points for advertisement in my comments. These are approximate costs. The bottom line is my recommendation at the very bottom. It includes the Portland Press Herald Sunday edition only, the Sun Journal, which is also owned by PPH. That would be a Sunday edition, edition. The Kennebec Journal was also effective. Bangor Daily News, less so, but not that expensive. Maine Municipal Association, New Hampshire Municipal Association, and Vermont League of Cities and Towns each have a small, very small cost for about a 60-day run. And we found that, that gets us into New England, and that's where you want to be. The ICMA, the International City Managers Association, we are members, but I'm not recommending you use them because you'll get people from Nevada, California, who are very qualified, but they want to come who life is good at your expense.
Okay. Do the, do the state of Maine print options you've identified, do they include any sort of electronic component at all? Like, like, do they even do electronic classifieds?
I believe that Maine Municipal Association, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and Vermont League of Cities and Towns are doing just what we're doing. That is, getting the ad, they go to the website of that association and all the information is there.
But I mean, like, Portland Press Herald or Sun Journal, will be nearly on their websites?
Not that I'm aware of. Strictly print.
And I thought you talked last week about Massachusetts. I don't see anything about Massachusetts.
Correct. And it, because if Massachusetts look and they usually get the Manchester Union Leader, which we don't advertise, but they also pick up on the New England papers. And by having the associations, you're getting managers who are already in the associations in that state picking up on it. If you want, we can put something into Massachusetts, but you're going to find that will up that price significantly just for a Sunday run. I'll do whatever you want.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay.
Could be, you know, if we're not successful round one, we might have to like cast a wider net, might have to, and do something like that, add something like that to it.
Most of the smaller communities have taken the advice of we get a lot of bang for the buck absent of the ICMA, which is the International City Manager.
What about, so I guess I'm, so the only electronic things on here are municipal associations. And, so you don't, you don't think it's worth doing something like, like LinkedIn or?
Indeed.
Yeah, maybe indeed.
I've tried that.
Does it just get a whole lot of like gravel and other?
As much as they advertise it, they screen. If you simply want to say that you got a hundred applications, we can do that. Success has not been through that specialized field. And I'm not so sure you're set up for that. Doesn't mean you can't luck out, but I, I guess I'm not the big risk taker of your dollars.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I guess there's always, you know, like I said a minute ago, we can always, if, if we don't get a pool that we're happy with first time around, we can always go back out and cast a wider net.
I would not want to duplicate or replicate the same advertisements, but in a wider net again.
Like, my sense is the primary one, and if I had to put money on the most likely source, it's going to be the MMA website. I mean, that's, that's where people in Maine that are looking for, that are in the municipal world, that are looking for a town manager, they're checking that all the time.
Want to come to Maine, they're probably looking at.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
There, over the last eighteen months, I've kind of watched what other headhunters have done. Casco's a good example, Gloucester at one point was a good example. Effectively, we're finding it's very difficult to attract attention. And in some cases, they've actually gone out to a second round. But I also looked at the timing of the year in which they were doing the advertisements. You're at the right time of the year, and I may have said this before, but I'm going to say it again. If someone is looking to move on, they've gone through their town meeting, they've taken their town to that and through that. If they have children, the children are getting out in June. That gives them time to settle their affairs, time to give notice, and time to move in. If that's what they're going to do. So it's a better time than if we start Labor Day and move through the holidays.
Yeah.
I'd say we get after, I'd say we get after it, but like.
Does anybody in reading through this on the, the opportunity page or the manager search and selection page have any suggested edits?
They make us, they make us sound big strategically located.
That's very true though.
Did we use too many words?
And you could have added the Brunswick, that Brunswick area is there too.
Sound good. We are strategically located. If you don't look at the map, you are.
Oh, yeah, this is like, if somebody was going to draw up bedroom community, and where would you put it if people were right here?
Exactly, yeah. I'd like to think that quality and that quantity of applications is what you're looking for.
Yep.
But the end results are the last page in that package, is the thank you but no thank you letter. And I tried to be reasonably respectful.
Yep. So any, any suggested edits?
So did you say that we would actually, we're not requesting an actual resume though?
Oh, absolutely.
Should that be listed?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying, like in the?
Yeah, it's in the list. You may, you cover it all in there, but I'm not sure.
But it doesn't actually say resume, right? Yeah, that might, it wouldn't be hard to include that.
Like the summary statement's kind of like almost your resume, but.
Not a problem. It's in.
Yeah. Any other edits or suggestions? All right, if not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the town manager hiring packet as presented with the edit of adding resume as one of the submittals. Is there a second? You guys are on it. Any further discussion? All in favor? We have a five zero. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we're still on number four. We've covered the first two bullets of it. The position, um, position description in the ads. We have status of interview committee membership, and application deadline of April 22nd.
It's a reminder so that people who are watching this replay, we've gotten two applications so far.
Okay. Does that include the one I sent you today? Not for me. Somebody emailed it directly to me.
That's why it was in the garbage.
I forwarded it to you.
I have not yet, I only have two as of six o'clock, about five.
Well, if it doesn't include that one, then you have to redown it.
Now we have to, but I just, again, we've been trying to keep this as open as possible. We're reminding people, you need to put your name in.
Yep, okay. And so the last bullet under number four is status of code enforcement officer position?
In progress, working back and forth, offers, counteroffers. I've given the applicant to the eighteenth of this month to give me a thumbs up. Counteroffer or thumbs down?
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments to Mitch?
No, great job on this topic.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I died tomorrow, I could still run with the package.
That's why.
We can't take that.
Don't do that.
All right, okay. Then if, if that's it on number four, then I'll open the floor for a public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, please come up, have a seat, state your name and your address and town.
I'm Heather Roy from Hollow Road, and I taped my comment to read because I don't know if I can get it all out in three minutes. So I'm going to read it, and if you want it, I'd also come to it. Okay, first, I was surprised to hear last week when Mitch said that he spends fifty to sixty percent of his time answering questions for office staff regarding TRIO and other issues. I would like for the board to consider hiring a trainer with potential to be called, if there are questions, when the trainer might not be here. I feel it would be a better use of the residents' tax dollars in terms of Mitch's rate of pay and time that he could be using dealing with larger scale items. Second, I would like for the board to consider the use of Adobe Scan App for ease of creating PDF documents from multiple, from multiple sources that would allow for ease of posting of agenda packets, et cetera. Like, it would have been nice to read the job description if we had that available when the agenda's posted. I'm happy to explain and show how this works. It's easily done until an IT person is hired, although I'm not sure if the burnout team is or not. But it would allow at least to easily post to the town Facebook page if the website posting hasn't been figured out yet. Expanding on the IT situation, oh, did you do your report? I read in your report. Did you do that?
Manager's report?
Yeah, is that later?
That's later on.
Okay. I have to make my public comment now, though, so I'm going to. Expanding on the IT situation and town office space use. If the Eureka Center was upgraded to be able to be used as a meeting space, then this current meeting space could be used as office space. In addition, with the insane cost of new construction, we have an entire mobile unit that could be converted into office space while allowing the fire department to be able to be considered for significant grant opportunities to help offset the capital reserve budget, which could in turn result in a lower tax burden. And I know you don't answer questions, but it would be nice to know how the second story of the Public Works building is being used and has that also been considered for office space. Fourth, it's my understanding that town manager is the actual tax collector trip slash treasurer, and that requires working knowledge of TRIO to do the tax commitment, tax liens, official reports, et cetera. And that transferring all of these duties to the deputy treasurer and expecting her to complete all of the other requirements for her job, that position rather, is not feasible. This is information that's coming directly from a previous employee in that role. It was really highlighted through our budget process this past season how incredibly important it is that the person that we hire have working knowledge of TRIO. So without being able to see that job description and requirements, I don't know if knowledge of TRIO is on there, but I think that that's something that's really important. And if it already missed that process because you guys already approved it, I think it's definitely something that the committee needs to have as a box to check. Because I think there's, you know, there's a lot of issues around TRIO. So I think having working knowledge of that is really going to be important moving forward. I would like for the board to consider contracting payroll out to a service. As a small business owner myself, prior to contracting my payroll out, the amount of time that I spend doing payroll each week, plus weekly tax filings, unemployment payments, work miss comp audits and payments, contracting that out to a service was the best thing I've ever done in terms of bringing up my time, and it's very inexpensive. I know I don't have nearly as many employees as the town does, but I pay thirty dollars a week to contract out my payroll. Lastly, I would like for the board to consider that if these things were done, our interim town manager could set up systems that the town is severely lacking in. Compensation structures, hiring processes, evaluations, exit interviews, policies, programs, and committees that do not currently exist but need to. We're very lucky to have someone here for the interim who has so much experience and knowledge, and we should really use that to our benefit to put the town in the best possible situation when we're looking at our next group of candidates. Thank you.
Who wants to follow that?
Oh, should I have one more thing, but I did.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Really? Okay. I think you might regret this, but.
I am way past that.
Okay, so one other thing I was very surprised to learn was about the settlement agreement and the decision of the board to settle for twenty-five thousand dollars when there had been a writ of execution issued for fifty thousand. I asked to see the details of the settlement agreement, and what I saw was basically an acknowledgement and receipt, but that didn't include any of the details. And so I know that you're not going to answer this question, and that's fine. I'll just wait for the document that shows what the details are to understand. There's a lot of going back to what you said before the meeting started about, you know, people are going to make up their own story if they don't know the actual story. And so from the outside looking in and the buzz that's going around town and driving by the property and seeing what it looks like, it is unclear why the board would choose to do that. And so I feel like information is the best weapon to combat that situation. You know, what, I'm just going to be really honest that what it looks like from the outside without the information is that this is a person, this is a situation, and this is not directed to that person at all. This is a process thing that I'm talking about, okay? Is that, that part of this land was in resource protection. There were things that were taking place that were adverse to the resource protection. That person had a court action against them and was, was found in the town's favor. And then instead of holding that person accountable to the fullest extent, which we don't know the reasons why, and that's fine, hopefully we find that out so that we can have a better understanding. It looks as though it's a, a person's going to come in, mess up re- resource protection land, and basically get a slap on the wrist to then be able to move forward and try to do something else. And so understanding what the board's process or thought process or, you know, reasoning behind not holding them accountable to the fullest extent in that situation, I think would really help residents squash what we see happening and then what people are speculating about.
So before I just, I think, and Mitch chime in here, obviously there's way too much detail and legal stuff to go into, you know, in a study like this. So I think if you drafted, what is your specific list of questions? Send it to the town manager, and we'll provide best answers we can to those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I had it down for payroll. I really, I really think it would be in the best interest of the town to do that for a number of reasons. Of course, I have the store, I know the state is constantly, every quarter, sending in if anybody holds child support, anything happens that they want to report. It's hot enough to do payroll, keep all the taxes straight, keep everything straight. Now to be doing all of these reports too, I think it's a bit much for somebody that is very new at all this and doesn't have the TRIO and everything. A payroll company could just spit out all the reports, plus the hiring process. The hiring process has a lot of different variables to every new person. Payroll company, they come in, they look at every person, they'll set up the whole thing, get it all set up and take it. And then on a new person, they have a spreadsheet, all you do is fill it out, send it over to them. They do everything so you don't have to worry about what's taken out, what insurance isn't taken out, what 401, anything. So they do the whole process, and I think it would be extremely beneficial to the town and keep us out of trouble too with the IRS and the state and Department of Human Services and anything else. Just something to really consider.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna Church.
Thank you.
Jill Gaston Gays, that's Hollow Road. I keep hearing TRIO spoken about.
Probably a lot of foreign words that come after it.
Yeah, after it, before it, exactly. So I guess some of my confusion is, my understanding is our last town manager didn't have a good understanding of TRIO. Our deputy treasurer doesn't have a good understanding of TRIO. So that does lead me to what have we been doing to educate her and get her the training that she needs to understand TRIO? I think that's of value for sure, even if it means shutting down for a day so that we know she's getting that training. And I think it's extremely important that our next town manager has an exceptional knowledge of TRIO, since it doesn't seem like anybody else does. I also think, you know, we discussed the last time that the town manager wouldn't be doing tasks at the window, but I think it's extremely important that the town manager understands how to do the tasks at the front window. At the very least, they'll be training people, or, you know, hopefully they can help train the ones that we currently have. The planning board meeting was canceled in part because the agenda wasn't posted. I'm kind of curious to know what the timeline is for posting agendas and where we're hoping to be with that. I realize that's a question.
I, I know what you mean. It's, it's questions, like, simple questions like that, I'm happy to answer. So it wasn't the, it wasn't the agenda, it was the meeting notice itself that wasn't posted. So it's just, just like for our meetings, you, and state law's a little bit vague. It doesn't give you like X number of days. It just says, needs to be posted in the, in the normal manner within a reasonable time period. I think that this says something like that. And so the issue was, this was related to the departure of the public information technician with no notice. That's the role that is responsible for posting the meeting notices so that when the meetings are held, they're legal. And that in turn, we, I guess they learned very late that that meeting had not been properly noticed, so they had to cancel it. So the agendas are, it's not required to post an agenda. I think we all want to see that happen, and we all want to get to a, a spot where, you know, the agendas are, our agendas, sorry for when they are, the agendas are posted, you know, several days in advance of the meeting so that people can see, you know, what the meeting is going to be. And then, once it's posted, things don't get added. Like, I, I know the, I know this week's agenda was posted at least on Thursday, if not sooner, because I saw it on Thursday of last week. And after that, somebody actually contacted us and wanted to get on the agenda for something, and we had to tell them no because the agenda's already been posted and yada, 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 so. And they understood that, they were good with that, we're going to do it in a future meeting, so. But the goal is, you know, like I said at town meeting, we definitely understand that there's tremendous room for improvement in the communication processes here, and that's like, that's one of the primary goals for this year is to be better in that area and get the agendas out there and minutes posted and meeting recordings up on the site, you know, within a reasonable amount of time after the meeting, all that stuff.
Okay, cool, thank you. And is the select board still using the town manager email, or do you guys have your own group email?
We use the town manager email. You mean townmanager@durhammain.gov?
Yeah.
Yeah, we use, we talk to him?
Well, I'm trying to figure out where that one goes.
Well, it goes to the end right now.
A new person, if I may.
Yeah, please.
New person would sign in, still townmanager@durhammain.gov.
So.
It comes right to the town manager's office.
Okay, so the select board doesn't have an email?
We each have our own. No, there's no, there's no email that is selectboard@durhammain.gov if that's what you're asking.
Okay, because on the website, it says to, to email townmanager@durham.
Yeah.
So, okay, so.
And so really, typically, when you have a town manager from government, really, the first place for any concern about really anything, whether it's fire or public works or anything, is to the town manager. And then the town manager is the person that then.
Boards it.
Well, if necessary, or, you know, addresses it like, you know, if somebody sent in something about public works, you know, it would go to the town manager, and then town manager would work with public works. And depending on what it is, we might not even know about it. Right? You know, if it's something more significant, town manager will inform us. And then if it's really significant, it might be something that has to come before the board to be considered by the board. But ninety-plus percent of stuff will, will probably just stop with the town manager.
Okay. No, it's just because the public works has their email, the fire department has their email. So I just wanted to clarify, which is fine, it's, that's, that's fine.
And that might be something, you know, I think we're going to be hesitant to, you know, take on a lot of new initiatives and make big changes or whatever until the new town manager is in place. But that would be something that they might want to look at, like, do they want the fire department? do they want the fire department and public works having their own email address? Or should all that be funneled through the town manager and then the town manager takes it? I don't know. I don't have a preference either way. It's really going to be up to the town manager.
And then the last point that I'm bringing up, because it's on the agenda. Is that I, and you guys will get tired of me saying this, but I do want to just reiterate the importance of public input, public conversation when it comes to the ARPA and spending plans. I think, you know, we, I've discussed it at length, but I definitely think it's important. Yep, yep, so you'll keep hearing it because I don't want it to be forgotten. And my husband asked me, maybe this kind of can't be answered, but when we voted on the stream culverts, we voted on culverts at the town meeting. So now that the phrase is being changed to bridge, does that change the vote? Because it sounds like there's going to be a lot more money needed. Granted, it's just verbiage, but you know, when you say culvert and then you say you got to build a bridge, it sounds very different to the naive ear.
I think they actually called it a bridge culvert, didn't they?
Yeah. The, the type of culvert I believe they're going to use is an open bomb. It, it can be built a few different ways, but it's an open bomb is what they're looking for.
It's like a, and it'd be, and it'll be concrete instead of metal or plastic, right?
Could be, could be metal, but.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, but it's not going to be plastic.
Probably is concrete.
All right, so that change doesn't delay things or anything like that?
No, because really.
Funding approval.
No, because at the end of the day, you know, and this is, I mean technically, technically, we didn't need to go to the town, well, actually to raise the money, you're right, because we raised that, right? Okay, that's different. So we raised the money for that purpose and it'll get spent on that purpose. And if it was money, if it was money coming out of capital funds, once the town votes to put money into capital funds for a particular purpose, then the board can authorize the expenditure of that money. It doesn't have to go to a town meeting vote. We typically on big projects, we take it to a town meeting vote anyway, just to make sure.
So what you're saying is if there's extra funds needed, it'll come from undesignated?
No, 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 to go from undesignated, that would have to go to a town vote. If it came, if, if, it wouldn't have to go to a town vote if we needed like additional monies and it came from public works capital reserves.
Okay.
But we can only do that if it's for a public works project. We can't take public works capital reserve money and spend it on technology in the Eureka Center.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Debbie Oliver, I actually have a question on the town manager hiring process. For those people who are going to be involved with that, is there an official place we should go? Well, I'm going to put my application, but is there an official place to understand the, the actual job position and the requirements from the state or something like that? Are we studying up, everybody who's involved has a, has the, a common understanding of what their role is?
I'm going to let Mitch answer that.
MRSA 30-A is the primary driver of the description and responsibilities, among other things, of the town manager. It gets to the town manager for government versus a select board or a town council, charter or non-charter. That's the first part. The, the second part is overly simplified. Once you adopt the town manager for government, the town manager is your chief executive officer of business. These are the board of directors, they're the policymakers. Town manager is the policy influencer. Overly simplified, but there's a division there. If you look carefully in the MRSA's dealing with the duties of a town manager versus elected officials, you get a better understanding. But what you don't see is what every community does. They take it and modify because they have different expectations of their town manager. And the smaller the community is, it tends to have more responsibilities and multiple jobs that go with that position. The larger communities tend to be very clear about segregation of duties. I was talking about it earlier. And so the position description that the board reviewed at the last meeting is the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to do, plus the commentary tonight, which is very important. And, and I think the distinction was made, knowing how to do it versus actually stepping in and doing it, the segregation of duties. Because if you are at the front counter, someone should be there as a third party who didn't do the collection, who reviews to make sure the money that you collected was properly recorded and deposited. And that's that checks and balances and segregation of duty.
Okay, and part of the process discussion we've had to date didn't include how the interview questions are formulated or is those standard questions or?
You won't find that unless you talk to a headhunter. I don't consider myself a headhunter, but I consider the fact that the select board wants to get to the core of what that applicant is offering this town. And in all of the interviews that I've worked with, they've asked me to create a set of questions that go forward. And in the first round interview, it's nice to know you, but we need to get a little bit more about you. If they are invited back for a second round, the questions can be very situational and detail-oriented. It can deal with personnel, it can be with issues of philosophy, ethics, morality to some degree.
So, so, so you'll take the first stab at the questions with the board? Does the board have to approve them or are they in some?
I want the board to have their fingerprints on it because ultimately I'm merely recommending to the board. And it doesn't mean that their questions are not valid. But I'm trying to get them to find out from that applicant, do we want to continue with that applicant based on what they have said? And we all know we can dress up on Sundays, but it's the other six days of the week that we're concerned about. And how do they function during the other six days of the week?
Yeah, if that's all you have, I actually have a lot of questions. So the timing of, I mean presumably there would be times that, because I think you've probably got a standard slate of questions that you've used in the past. And we would probably review and maybe have some others. But I would think once the committee is formed, there'd probably be an opportunity for the committee to review the questions and if they see a gap somewhere, they could recommend other questions that could be added.
Mine are not the final questions.
Right, I think the important issue with, the reason for having a list of questions is so that, and then the way you described it to me in some of our conversations on how it's worked in other towns is that you literally assign people down the list, okay, you ask this one, you ask this one, you ask this one. So that, especially in the first round of interviews, so that everybody's getting asked the same questions, gets the same equitable treatment. But I think there's probably room for some, for the committee to have some input on what those actual questions are.
You ultimately made the final decision as to what questions you want to use. And, and like everything else, we can come out of the gate with a big bomb or we can lead up. You know, it depends on what your style or what you, you know, do we need to get a stretcher to get them out of here? But I think that that process, and I'm not the last word on it, but I have found that there are probably some consistent questions in every community. And they go, it's like, you know, you got to peel the layers off of them. Let me find out, is this person just prepared to answer these questions? Or do they have the substance behind them to do the job that your job description calls for?
Okay. Any other public comments tonight?
Does he, do you, who checks them? What's the word I want?
That's the question you're asking.
Oh, my gosh. You know, who you put down as your reference?
Mitch would do that.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Not only I believe is your town application for employment showing references, but I clearly want to see the references. But I will tell you point blank, I've never seen a reference that the applicant didn't like.
Right.
Right, I mean, obviously you get sure that.
You need to go deeper than that and find out, and that's why we do a criminal background check. I do credit checks. I don't, but through resources. And ultimately, is it 100% proof? No, because there are things that you don't hear in an interview that can actually backfire on you. And that's happened to a community I worked with once where we checked and, you know, there's only so much internet information that they have about a person. And then once they finish their probationary period, in this case, that's what happened, that person started expousing some political point of views that were so far off of the radar screen that they called me up and said, what do we do next? I said, well, you call me a lawyer. But I then gave them some steps.
And then you call me, it'll be your interim town manager.
Didn't want that.
It's a visit model.
But basically what happens in situations like this, it's only led to get bilateral agreements, which put money on the table and nobody goes after anybody in the court of law. It just isn't a good fit and you work that out.
Any other public comments, last call? Okay, clueless public comment. All right, number six, distribution of fiscal recover funds information.
It's simply a fact sheet. I ask you to take it home, it's more information than you want. But again, with what's happening, what has happened over the last two years and what is going to happen with our economy, there's going to be infusions. And these are beginning to come through as possible ways in which a community may best utilize dollars and cents going forward.
And I believe, you know, somewhere in that, in that law or, yeah, I don't know if it's a law or a program, even though, you know, we are, we're committed to a robust public input process, but I've, I've heard through the grapevine that there are some specific requirements regarding public input. We want to make sure that even though we might, we, we might think we're doing great, but we might be missing a requirement or something. So we want to make sure that we, you know.
And that's why I'm giving you this a little bit to keep you informed. If you're successfully getting a manager quickly who doesn't have a federal fund background, this will help guide you in your, at least asking.
And one thing I do know is we, we have time with this. This is not something that we even need to figure out, just, we don't even need to spend any of the money, money in 2023. You know, I mean, we have time to, you know, consider lots of things and, you know, do it right.
I started doing a little research on this and I found a white paper in Scotty County from about a year or so ago that outlines a lot of this here. It was actually pretty informative, but yeah, it's starting to make me think about some of the ways you can actually use them, like you can weave through this a little bit. Interestingly, you know, like we, facility upgrades and stuff, if people want to go and do that with a new town manager coming in, that person may have some other ideas.
It has changed a lot even since a year ago, especially for smaller towns.
Yes, it has.
Because when it first came out, there was like almost nothing.
Right, I saw that and then I saw it get a little, I'll say liberal as it fell along as to how you could manipulate.
I know, I mean.
What's that? Yeah.
One thing I, one thing, yeah, as we go through this, and I'll definitely be advocating for is that we, that we utilize it for like one, like one-time expenditures versus.
That looks the easiest.
Building things into a budget that, that you have to anniversary year after year and then when this money's gone, you still have to put that in your budget. You know, like, like, I'm just making this up, but like adding a police force. I'm not advocating for that, I'm not saying I'm a favorite, I'll just be clear. But that would be the type of thing like, oh, let's see, we're going to buy a cruiser and hire two deputies and then all of a sudden when this money runs out, you still got, you built that into your thing.
Reoccurring. Please away from that. But there's definitely some things that we need to do that's, I'll say capital, if I have a better word, that just.
Right, and I'm sure there'll be tons of ideas and, and it's funny, I mean, I bet we'll be able to spend 400 grand so fast it'll make people's heads spin. By the time all the ideas come out and, you know, it'll be, you know, be a funnel process, right? Like, okay, here's a whole bunch of stuff. And then we, we'll have to prioritize and narrow it down to, you know, what we can actually do.
Can I ask a question, Mitch?
Yeah.
Can you mention? A lot of times when there's bigger government programs such as this, the government and/or MMA sets up like, there's advisory teams or, or businesses that actually get involved and actually advise the town and/or. Is that, are any of those things in place yet?
I'd have to check with MMA.
GP Cog, in a meeting I was at, had mentioned maybe doing some stuff along those lines too.
I think that what we're seeing is an evolution of thinking about how this will go forward. What your chair captured the key points, non-reoccurring expenses. Expenses that have a longevity of amortization so that you're not necessarily telling the taxpayer, well, you know that thing we built last year? Now we got to do this, this year with that and it keep you occurring over.
No, I, I would agree with that. My, my concern is more about from a compliance issue and things of that nature. It's not necessarily for what we earmark the funds for, more so for compliance, et cetera. Right, I know when people see a large amount of money, like geez, you know, it's, it's like all of us, we have a tendency, you get a couple, a couple extra bucks in the bank, you, you might get a little over carried away with it and you're not even realizing what the ramifications are. So mine was more from a compliance standpoint, more so than an advisory panel, what to.
The manager you hire should be sent to those. Bring that information back and share it with all the parties in the community involved. Nothing is without its strings attached.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a lot, like I think a lot of the people have alluded to it's a lot. And even though we have ourselves and even with the exception of yourself, a public input, at the end of the day, a lot of these people are laypeople, and I'll include myself in that conversation. So if we have an entity that actually is well-versed in this and so forth, that can guide us through the process, I feel a lot more comfortable than just winging it.
Some, some communities have actually hired a consultant, you know, to, to take them through it, but.
I would ask at this juncture, when you get down to number eight upcoming meetings and town news, please allow me to give you my manager's report. And I've got some thoughts that I want to share with you and the public that may fit into what you just mentioned, Richard. But beyond that, just common sense things that I want to put in your record so that whoever's sitting in this chair after me is going to be able to pick that up and at least understand you were giving thought to it.
Yeah, it's just a government program and it can be tricky to navigate. Some of us in the business world realize, whether it's retention tax credits or WOTC credits or things of that nature. I mean, a lot of us would utilize a third party to help manage that.
It's conceivable that in the larger communities, you're going to see tax increment financing districts have the legal fees paid and everything. And once that's done, you've got a 25 to 35-year plan for what's going to happen within that TIF as it's called. And that's a good investment, but it's not reoccurring.
No, I understand. Okay, thank you. That's all I was concerned with. Thank you.
Pardon me, I need a short pause here. I'm gonna, I need to make a slight adjustment to the agenda. We have the oaths tonight to sign for historic district commission, cemetery committee and conservation commission. But they were actually, they should have been under, excuse me, consent agenda. But they, they're plugged down at an upcoming meeting. So I'm going to make seven C, approval of oaths for the historic district commission, cemetery committee and conservation committee. And we have those available, you know, today, it's a signing party tonight. But they're, they're taking it easy on us though. Usually we get them all in one night and it's like 70 signatures at once. But right, we, it looks like we got just a small portion up tonight. We'll get one later. Okay, so is there any objection to that agenda adjustment? Okay. Then we are, actually next is the consent agenda. Actually, we don't have the minutes from the April 5th, so I'm going to remove seven A. So what's left is approve and sign the April 12 warrants, which is like paying the bills, and then C, which I just added. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have Todd, Mussoo, Rich, seconds, all in favor? Five, zero. If everybody's wondering why we don't call for discussion on a motion for the consent agenda, it's because it's the consent agenda, and if somebody wanted to discuss, they would have pulled it off the consent. Okay, upcoming meetings in town news, before we get into that, I will kick it to the town manager, who had some thoughts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to look out for the next few weeks, and of course, there are a lot of different things happening, so bear with me, but I also want to keep the public and yourselves informed. Within the, with the conclusion of the annual town meeting and quarterly reports, there are, that are due, in addition to the setting up of the approved budget, I'm supporting the closing of the town offices on Wednesday, on Wednesdays, just Wednesdays, through the balance of April. Once we get through this, we'll be able to reopen on Wednesdays for regular business. By the way, on the three and a half days after the town meeting this year, the staff registered over a hundred and twenty vehicles, they completed twenty title applications. Needless to say, they were very, very busy, and your staff, despite some of the breadth of knowledge, they are committed to trying to serve the best they can. And we're catching up, and we appreciate the public's understanding of why we need to have Wednesdays to do that. It's impossible to get some of these things done when you're full bore at the counter, and that's our business, we understand that. Over the next few weeks, the select board will face some demanding issues, which include review of citizen applications to be pointed to assist the select board for the hiring of the next town manager, and I remind people again, applications are due April twenty-second, and we close at twelve-thirty that day, that's a Friday. If all goes as planned, I will affirm the hiring of a qualified individual to the position of code enforcement officer at your April twenty-sixth meeting. We are still working towards getting our agendas posted in a timely fashion, so that our citizens can beware of the business the select board is working on. The heating and cooling system in half of the town offices in need of replacement. We should be moving this along now, since the offices will need cooling in this summer and better heating next winter. I do not believe any appropriations have been made, but there may be opportunity to use ARPA or other funds, because it's not, it's advertised over more than just two or three years, it's a longer-term investment. As for any expansion of the town offices, I strongly urge the board to start that discussion now, with a timeframe to bring it before the town meeting in the next year or two. Your current facility is not working well. In the interim.
You mean the building, right?
Yes.
Okay.
In the interim, I'm asking the board to approve the modification, right, of the current women's room to an office and make the current men's room a gender-neutral bathroom. I started out talking with the ladies, they're the most impacted. They're a rough bunch of people. Bring it on.
You mean that the good way, right?
Yes. But what that would do would actually allow us to convert that office, so that your code enforcement officer would have the ability to do the things that are necessary out of that office, and in the other office that they occupy, the planner and your tax assessor would still have desk space available. No expansion, well, it, it just, in public works, we probably do all but the plumbing, but basically, it's remove the stuff, paint as needed, desk in there, done. And it makes better use of that, that space.
So you're proposing to see the CO in the bathroom versus, isn't the other office bigger? It wouldn't be when you're done yet.
You also have file cabinets and everything, and right now, your planner and your tax assessor both need desks and file space.
Well, I can appreciate that.
How big is that women's room? I've never been in there.
I read that, and I was like, I'm gonna have to go in there and see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I would think that the office currently in the back is bigger than the women's room.
Please take a look.
Yeah. Why? I mean, I didn't bring my skirt today, but I'll get that.
But I, I'll give you some comparison. It's just about the size of the men's room.
I, I still envision that as smaller than the office, or the code office.
All right, but anyway, I mean, we don't need to get into the details of that tonight.
But you can understand that we're trying to look at some short-term ability to.
Yeah, no, no, and I think warranted, I was just, I was just, I'm hesitant with the, with the, you know, that office being, you know, for two part-time people, you know.
Well, you've got your planner, who will be there on Mondays now, Tuesday mornings, and Wednesdays, because we add the time of distribution, not Thursday or Friday, or Saturday or Sunday. So that person could need some time there. Code enforcement is getting to be a very big business, and if you take a look, not these, but if you take a look, you've got files here, you've got, it, it's getting to a point where the shoebox is no longer the best way to operate.
So will you have a cost for us on that?
I can get you across, I was testing the waters, and it seems like, you know.
What, yeah, and before you leave the building, in your comments, not literally leave the building, but the heating and cooling system, our sense is that that's not gonna make it to next winter, that it needs, something needs to happen before next winter. Now, we have capital, as I was alluding to earlier, we have capital in the municipal building account, that I think we've assumed that, you know, we could, that if we needed to, that we would use those funds to do a heating, cooling project here. My, my question is going to be, if we do that, can we then, I think we can then later, as long as we, you know, save our receipts and everything, recoup those funds with ARPA funds, if that's where the process comes down. Yeah, well, that's something to look into, but.
You know, and certainly the idea of, if you look at the Eureka House as an alternative for meetings, you've now opened up this space here.
Right. We talked about that before.
Yeah, and, and so I'm just throwing something else in the mix for consideration, but to not do anything and just keep talking about it does not solve the immediate problem. And quite frankly, when I looked at the plans from two thousand and four, two thousand and six for the expansion on this building, that's how long it's gone, and that was done with the, I think, the initial expectation, oh, like, maybe two thousand and ten or two thousand probably, but.
I, I think the one thing I would caution against with that is that, like Rich, like with other issues, you know, we're laypeople, Todd excluded, I guess, when it comes to building renovations, so rather than us say, well, let's move this over here, and move this over there, and that over there, that perhaps we look at putting some funds in the budget in, what year are we in now? Twenty, in twenty-three, for like design work, you know, to come up with a plan, that's where you say, okay, this is what we want, we want X office, we want this, we want that, and maybe even combine it with something, like the Eureka Center, and have an actual professional plan from a designer that is gonna think of stuff that we would never even think about.
We had a plan.
That was like, oh, five.
That's the one I'm looking at.
Four, four, a lot, and, and, and it might, I don't know where that came from, if a professional did that, it might be just having to reevaluate that, and the requirements may have changed, because the, we didn't have a full-time code person, and, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have public works, then, then that's the guy that packs this building.
No, it'd be interesting to see what it is.
Yeah, but yeah, but your point is well taken, that, you know, I think the heating, cooling is probably a little bit more short-term, and then, but larger building renovation is probably a little bit longer term.
I don't know the condition of this side of the house and its system, but it functioned well, I've been here very well, and the ladies seem to feel that, and they were taxing it because they turned it up, hopefully, to migrate heat, but that side.
That, but that's why, the reason they're doing that is because that side doesn't work.
Exactly, that's the point, and if we don't have this conversation now, it's going to another ten years, and then you're gonna be in a big trouble.
Yeah, so the previous town manager had done a little bit of legwork on this, and I'm not exactly sure where that stood, but we should dig that up, and we should probably be sooner rather than later, moving on, getting an evaluation in what we need to do, because you know how long it's taking to get contractors or anything, if we need to get work done before winter.
Sure.
I was impressed with that.
Yeah, me too, and so I, I think there's, I think there's some information that Kathy left behind that might address that.
The, the, the key factor that I work from is very simple, form will follow function. So until we do an analysis and evaluation of the functions you expect for your local government over the next five to ten years and beyond, that has to include the nasty word of growth, you can't go ahead and just say, well, we're gonna put a tent out in the front that will cover it. It's going to require something that meets current and future, otherwise, you're gonna be behind people.
I, I agree completely, and this, this is the type of work I do for a living, and you know, people will hear me, I'm always hopping on, first thing we need to do is identify the requirements, like, so what are the requirements? And that's, that's kind of what you're saying, in terms of what are, what are the needs? What do we, like, okay, we need, we're not, we're not trying to tell them how to solve it, we're telling them what we need. Okay, we need office space for a code enforcement officer with X amount of footage, so he can uh, or she can, you know, spread out maps and have big file cabinets, and we need, you know, something for the planner who, you know, with a door, so they can have private conversation, you know, whatever it is, so we, we list all those requirements, that's when the designer comes in and says, okay, give those requirements, what you have, and maybe calculate your budget, this is what I'm recommending.
And records retention is becoming a big issue.
Yeah, no, I get that, my, you know, I guess what I would caution everybody on, and my concern on that is that actual bathroom, because if you do go to that town hall, I don't know what the state codes are for.
We want to check the first.
Compliance and check with.
Ventilation.
Ventilation, light and vent, things of that nature.
Probably have to put a window.
And if you're gonna take apart a bathroom, it's gonna be a hell of a lot more expensive to have a bathroom in the future, if you actually have to have two, so I just be careful with that bathroom.
Just sit that in the pipes. At this point, I'm glad to see that you're thinking about it, that's the important thing, and I'm gonna keep asking you to keep thinking about it to a point where, what are we gonna do next?
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, the board has been presented with this on a couple of different occasions, at least during my tenure, and obviously in the past, since you have plans from two thousand and five, and, you know, one of the things that we could possibly explore, which we talked about recently, I guess, we have a lot of buildings that we don't necessarily utilize to their capacity, others, public works, building, the Eureka Center, et cetera, and I think we can potentially look at that a little bit more closely before we start making major renovations and sledgehammer shit.
Yeah. Okay.
I may continue.
The first guest, do you have a.
Reminder again that commute, to the community, that applications are available, available at the town offices, if you're interested in being considered for one of the three appointments to the town manager hiring committee. The deadline is Friday, April twenty-second, and the select board will begin the interview process starting the twenty-sixth. And I'm repeating this over and over and over again, to remind people, I didn't hear about it, I'm telling you, get your friends, your relatives, if they are interested, if they have an opinion, and they live in town, they need to fill out the application. No application, no consideration.
Are spouses of select board members allowed to apply?
I don't know, but.
Someone asked that.
Please, please. The comment is closed.
My work schedule for the next two weeks is gonna shift slightly. I'll be in the office from April fourteenth and April nineteenth through the twentieth, and work around my medical appointments. The board members or the office can reach me by my cell phone number, you should all have those, and I'll be in New York from the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, and back here from the twenty-fifth again. So I'm gonna be back and forth, if you will. I've asked Calvin to provide the board with a fuel price report of our most recent bid, this will be presented to the board at your twenty-sixth meeting. Reminder that the town offices are closed April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as this is Patriot's Day. Respectfully submitted.
Any, any further questions on that? So I'm gonna segue, it, it's part of the upcoming meetings in town news, and I mean, so Mitch and I were, were talking about, you know, what the timing and interview process might look like for people that apply to be on the committee, kind of the working idea we wanted to bring to you guys tonight is that we, we've already established the twenty-second as the deadline for applications to be in, and then we would kind of have to kind of see how many we have, and that would, that would kind of be a driver of next steps, that we would look at the evenings of the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, if necessary, to actually have staff schedule those, those interviews. The intent is that they, they're just five to ten minutes, you know, in some cases, we may not know the person, you know, put a face to a name, you know, have them just tell us briefly why, why they want to be on the committee, and kind of what they bring to the table, and any questions that pop up, and, okay, thank you, and then that'd be a chew and sweep. So, and I know, you know, potentially three nights in a row is, you know, we're all busy, you know, so if I need some, ask you to pencil them in, and, and everybody just try to make yourselves as available as possible. If you, if one of those nights is not going to work for you at all, then let Mitch know, they copy me on it, please, and then we can either, because we need to make sure we have at least three of us here, so if, if like four of us are not available on the twenty-seventh, then that's not gonna work, right?
What, what timeframe?
I think we typically look at, again, I think it depends on how many applications we get. If we get like ten applications, then maybe we'll, maybe we start at, you know, maybe we're okay to start at six or six-thirty, you know, and do five on the twenty-sixth, and five on the twenty-seventh, or.
So this is in lieu of the meeting?
Well, no, it might be in addition to it.
Okay.
Yeah, depend, it, it depends, again, now, we can, well, actually, we need to talk about that tonight, so, were you thinking that we would do some of the interviews actually on the twenty-sixth, or just you are, okay?
The quicker you move, the quicker the process gets engaged.
Okay, so, yeah, and it might be that, again, we'll have to see how many we have, it might be that we try to do interviews from like five to six-thirty, and can do that before the meeting, or we schedule them to start, and hopefully have a quick agenda, and start them at seven.
If you, whatever time you choose to start your meeting, call that your official meeting, because the more you and I have talked, the reality is, it's an interview process, and I reviewed the right-to-know law specifically as to executive session, and this is an appointment. And as such, the sooner we get to the executive session to do those, the better you're gonna be, in addition to all the other business you might have to take care of. Like an example, tonight, you're moving fairly quickly through your agenda. Hopefully, we keep the agenda light on the twenty-sixth, and you can, and if we only have ten to twelve citizen applications, then you may try to do all of those interviews and not have to come back on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, you've got some flexibility. You just need to keep the public informed, and we need to be able to tell the applicants what you want to do, so they will be here for that particular night.
So we might want to consider something like, well, actually, let's open it up for discussion, thoughts on, first of all, the, the date, well, the twenty-sixth, I'm ready on a meeting anyway, but thoughts on availability on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and yeah, concerns you have, what, you know, how early you could start on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, just, you know, what are, what are people thinking of?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth works for me five o'clock on, would be fine.
Fine, I need to, I commit myself to it.
Okay, yeah, me too. I know you're coaching and stuff, so maybe tell her.
I have a game on the twenty-second.
So Rich, no twenty-seventh?
I haven't yet.
You're good for the twenty-sixth, though? The regular meeting night?
The regular meeting night, I'm good, yeah.
What about the twenty-eighth? If they have, if it goes that.
As of right now, I'm moving to the twenty-eighth to.
Okay, so really, the only, that's, that's great, the only thing we have is Rich on the twenty-seventh, so it sounds like we're good to go there, so I would suggest maybe we consider authorizing the town manager to go ahead and schedule the interviews as he sees fit, using twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and if necessary, the twenty-eighth. Well, actually, that's a good point, if, if we don't need three nights, then go twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, skip the twenty-seventh. If we're gonna need three nights, then we'll have to use the twenty-seventh, but that's the, that's the, you know, lowest priority, that's a good call.
But you're gonna be in, you're gonna be in New York on the twenty-second?
Twenty.
Twenty-first and twenty-fourth.
Right, I leave that Thursday, I'll be back that Sunday.
Schedule, make up the schedule on Monday, books easier.
Yeah, and it might be that, you know, we can notify, we can notify people that have applied, like now, we can say, we don't know the specific time slots yet, but the committee interviews are gonna be twenty-sixth. we don't know the specific time slots yet, but the committee interviews are going to be 26th, 27th, 28th or, or 26th, 28th and if necessary, the 27th. And so try to keep, you know, those nights open.
Okay. That we can do.
All right. Then I'm going to move that we authorize, actually, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to schedule interviews with the citizen, with the citizen applicants to the search committee.
So.
Josh moves. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Joe seconds. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Five, zero. Okay. And so as we said, so our, our regular board meeting will start at 6:30 and we can start as early as 5:00. And it's not unprecedented at all to have an executive session prior to the beginning of a regular meeting. So if that works out, that's okay. So I think what we heard here is that from 5:00 on, on the 26th or, or 28th, we're all good. And then the 27th, we're also good from 5:00 on, but Rich is not available on the 27th.
Yeah. Oh, the, the 5:00 on thing, you mean, those are, right at 5:00.
We're pushing it for me. I'm not actually. I, we could say 5:30 or 5:15.
Your call. You want to start at 5:30?
Let's say 5:30. And, and even if we have to do some before the regular meeting and a few after, that's.
Yeah, that's the only one here if you guys are.
All right. And that's all I have for upcoming meetings and confirming that we do not need an executive session tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay, so mine is done. None is done. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Rich moves. Joe seconds. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.